We were called to order in Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors business meeting Tuesday, December the 20th, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the Pennsylvania County General District Courtroom, Edwin R. Shields Courthouse Edition, 11 Bank Street. Roll call, please.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
Mr. Blackstock.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Farmer.
Here.
Dr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Scares.
Here.
Mr. Warren.
Here.
I ask that you would observe a moment of silence with us and, of course, remember all
the citizens that we lost, but in particular, I think the board would like for you to remember the Schumake family. Mr. Schumake was a regular attender and very active in process and all in government, and he passed away recently, so if you can remember that family, we would greatly appreciate it. Please observe a moment of silence. Would you join me in a pledge of allegiance?
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there items to be added to the agenda, Chairman?
Chairman, I have two items to add to the agenda.
Chairman Blackstock?
I'd like to make a motion to add the following items to the business meeting agenda on the one of the Social Services Board of Members as item 14E, and number two matters on the work session solid waste recommendations is item 14A.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Farmer. Is any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. All votes have been cast. Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the agenda amended as amended.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Scares. Any discussion on the motion? Please cast your votes. Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. We're down to consent agenda. Voice play.
Mr. Chairman, will you make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. Motion made by Mr. Farmer, seconded by Mr. Farmer. Any discussion on the motion? Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Under consent agenda, we do have one resolution tonight, and Mr. Farmer is going to read that for us, and I'd ask that all the board members come down forward. And would Mr. Arnold and his family and coach come forward, please?
I'm going to read this resolution here. It says, "Whereas at the regular scheduled meeting of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors held November the 20th of 2018 in the General District Courtroom at the Edwin R. Shields Courthouse Edition, the following resolution was presented and adopted. Matthew Arnold is a sophomore at Chatham High School, where he currently has a 4.3 grade point average and is ranked fifth in his class. Whereas Matthew is in the current, excuse me, is the current 2018 Virginia High School League Group II A State Golf Champion, and whereas Matthew shot a, excuse me, had a 78.6 scoring average throughout the regular season, he shot an 80 in the district tournament under tough rainy conditions to win the tournament and earned Dogwood District Golfer of the Year. Whereas he finished fifth overall in the Region 2C with a 77 and 73 to win the state tournament. Whereas Matthew Arnold has performed admirably throughout his winning season of 2018, bringing recognition not only to himself, but his school, his county, and his citizens. Therefore, let it be resolved that the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors on the behalf of all the county citizens express their sincere appreciation, admiration, and congratulations to Matthew for his winning season and his 2018 Virginia High School League Group II A State Golf Championship title, given under my hand the 20th day of November 2018, Robert "Bob" Warren, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors." Young man is in the Chatham Blair's district, but I've had the privilege of reading this and giving it to you tonight, but I would say, we have some other golfers here, and so I know how tough it is, and that's a great job right there. I was thinking about some words to say, and for me, you know, golf is a practice sport. You have to put the hours into earn the results. And so I know there's other things you could be doing. It sounds like you're putting your time into your homework in your school with that GPA. I don't know what the other four people are, or how they're achieving that, but you're doing a great job, and I look forward to seeing you continue. You're only being a sophomore. Two more years of improving your swing and your scoring average, I think you'll have a great future. Great job to his parents and to his coach.
I just want to say thank you. We're extremely proud, you know, as a coach, to see a kid like Matthew get recognized. It's very special. Thank you.
Can we reach your coach?
That's a tough one.
Matthew, after you turn 18, I need Captain Stoyler's partner. You're out, Chad. We're down to presentations. I had a report from Danville, Pennsylvania Community Services, and Dr. Julie Brown.
Chairman Warren, members of the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Satherin, and staff, I'm Julie Brown, board member and past chair of Danville, Pennsylvania Community Services. With great pleasure, I present to you our annual report for fiscal year 2018. This year, our annual report theme is a message to the community about our growth to meet our residents' needs, simply titled, "Under Construction." The information in our report outlines the ways that DPCS serves the citizens in Pennsylvania County and the city of Danville as a preferred provider of top-quality behavioral health, developmental disability, and prevention services. The unique cover of this year's annual report presents an aerial view of our main campus location on Harrison Street, which is undergoing expansion and renovations to better serve our community. The variety and complexity of DPCS's services meet the needs of the individuals with a behavioral health disorder, a developmental disability, or those who may be at risk. The service is under construction. There are nearly 50 unique programs for adults and children operated by DPCS through its Behavioral Health, Developmental, and Prevention Services divisions. Some of these programs are small and provide a very specific service with a large impact, such as the Regional Alliance for Substance Abuse Prevention and Race Act, our Youth Advisory Council, a group of 20 teenagers from the sixth area high schools whose work with their peers resulted in engaging more than 1,000 students to join a 65% who choose not to use alcohol campaign, and hosting a Don't Smoke No Joke block party for more than 200 teens. Other DPCS programs are large and complex, providing life-changing services to individuals, such as case management, that is found in all of our divisions for all disabilities, which served 2,938 individuals last fiscal year. Tonight, I'd like to highlight just a few of the incredible numbers and programs that DPCS staff facilitated in FY 2018. In our prevention division, we served 11,216 individuals in the schools and community, including family wellness initiative activities like parenting education, giving 160 parents the tools to build stronger families and healthy families, an evidence-based in-home program for at-risk parents of children pre-naled to age five, which served 59 new parents last year. In response to the opioid epidemic in Virginia, revived trainings are now provided to the community monthly to improve the understanding and response to an opioid overdose with naloxone, a medication designed to rapidly reverse opioid overdose. In our developmental and behavioral health services division, we began providing permanent supportive housing services, an evidence-based program to aid those with chronic homelessness and mental health issues, filling up the 30 vouchers provided by the state within six months with expansion plan for next year. DPCS serves 333 individuals with a home and community-based waiver so that they could thrive in the community and not simply reside in an institution. We provide 6,671 medication management appointments for adults and children. And finally, demonstrating the scope of one core service provided to most individuals served at DPCS, 27,532 units of case management were provided to 2,938 individuals. These are just a few examples of the nearly 50 unique programs for children and adults operated by DPCS through its Behavioral Health, Developmental, and Prevention Services divisions. Let's talk a little bit about the places under construction. Renovations and expansion of our service locations in the last year and ongoing into the next year everywhere. Three of our four residential facilities for developmental services have had renovations or are completing renovations to enhance the homes of the 29 individuals who choose to live at DPCS. Our main campus location on Harrison Street passed the midpoint of the expansion and renovation project at the close of the fiscal year, which will consolidate services and provide a one-stop facility to meet the needs of individuals at any age at one site. As I give this report to you in November, the new wing was open to staff to move in on November 8. The remaining campus renovations are planned for completion by year's end. A community open house will be planned for the spring, and there will be more details to come. The people who make that construction happen. DPCS is a workforce of nearly 300 strong, composed of men and women who are passionate and dedicated in their work to help others live, work, and play in their communities at their maximum potential. Each one of the staff brings their unique passion, skill set, and focus that makes an impact each day on the lives of those we are honored to serve. DPCS is also a volunteer board of directors, composed of 15 citizens dedicated to our community. Eight of those board members, including myself, are appointed by you, Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, and the remaining are appointed by the Danville City Council. The staff at DPCS work with infants, toddlers, children, adolescents, adults, and seniors, everyone in our community. In fiscal year 2017, DPCS directly served 17,192 residents of the city of Danville in Pennsylvania County through 196,573 distinct units of service. In closing, on behalf of our board of directors, I would like to thank you for this opportunity for appointing eight members from Pennsylvania County to the Danville, Pennsylvania Community Services Board of Directors. It is our honor and a pleasure to serve the community in this capacity. We appreciate your confidence and your ongoing support. And I have with me here tonight Jim DeBeau, our executive director, who will assist with any questions that you have.
Any comments, Mr. DeBeau?
No, other than everyone should have an annual report in front of them, and I passed them out for most of people in the audience, but if you'd like one, do you think that when you came in, they have some extras up here for you?
Any questions? Should we move on? Comments? Should we move on?
Great job.
We're very appreciative of your support as well.
Thank you very much.
Great job. Thank you. We are down to the item nine, public hearings. Each person addressing the board on the hearing of the citizens shall be a resident or landlord of the county or the registered agent of such resident or landlord. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and district in an audible tone or voice for the record. Unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall be limited, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during the hearing of the citizens. All remarks should be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the citizens shall last for a maximum of 45 minutes. Any individual that is signed up to speak during said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the next board meeting. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. And the first to sign up tonight is Mr. Wayne Robertson. Mr. Robertson.
My name is Wayne Robertson. I live in the Chatham Blair's district, Mr. Warren's district. I want you to know that I really appreciate your giving citizens the opportunity to speak to you about things going on in the county. You are doing that right. One thing you're doing wrong is the trash tax. Don't you realize there are a lot of senior citizens who are trying to live on social security, and they're trying to scare up enough money to buy gas and fuel oil for the winter, and then you want $120 from them? There are a lot of working poor who want to buy Christmas presents for their children, and they can't spend what they really want to because they have to give you $120 for the trash tax. I'm particularly disgusted with you because you won't need to collect the trash tax from the renters who rent property from me. That is not my function to collect taxes. That's the function of the treasurer. What I want you to do is to tell your staff to find some other way to collect the trash tax other than going through the property owner. And don't accept the thing that I've heard before if they can't think of any other reason. That's why you pay them, to solve problems like that. Better yet, why don't you cut the budget? Cut the budget 4%, 5%, 6%, whatever it takes. All the departments could cut that from their budget. They run and run and carry on, but not one of them would go out of business. You spend too much money. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Next up is Mr. Curtis Allen.
Gentlemen, my name is Curtis Allen. I'm from the Calhoun, Chatham district. I have some questions that I'm not going to get answered, but I want you to know my question. Question number one. As elected officials by every poll citizen in this county, why did y'all deem it necessary to go behind closed doors and hide and make this deal with Little Ben Davenport on this trash lot? Question one. Two, why were there not bids taken on this trash lot? What business in this world does not put out bids for the lowest bid to do stuff? As I read in the paper, it was to keep the money in the county. Who's money? Not our money. Number three, if we choose not to do this, this is our trash. We can handle our trash ourselves. We have recycling. We have incineration. We can handle our own trash. We cannot afford to pay Little Ben Davenport more money because he don't want to get his hands dirty in the trash business anymore. He doesn't want to run a landfill anymore. Well, Pennsylvania County's got plenty of guns. They're everywhere. Plenty of places for landfills. There's no reason, no reason for us to have to pay this kind of money. There's people send you everywhere, me and my wife, with disabled people, and we got to come up with a number, $120, to pay for trash. Now, this last thing a few years ago, okay, it was 30 bucks twice a year, but now y'all want to hold on it one time? I don't understand. I don't understand what you had to hide to do this. Why was it being, why weren't we all allowed to come and hear what happened behind those doors? You were representing us. You were spending our money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Next up is Katie Whitehead.
Katie Whitehead, Chatham Blair's. I appreciate your attention. Thank you, Chairman Warren, for encouraging me to speak to you all tonight. I am here to speak in opposition very specifically to the South Gate pipeline, the Mountain Valley Pipeline-South Gate extension. MVP South Gate is not the MVP Main Line, and MVP is not Williams Transco. Through newspaper reports and court decisions, MVP has proven themselves to be unreliable and dismissive of regulations. I am deeply concerned they could have a pipeline near our homes and our schools. I was angered last week when a land agent for MVP called my family wanting to make an offer for an Eastman crossing our family's tree farm. The agent was aggressive and said that the South Gate project has been approved. The project has not been approved by FERC. This is not the only false or misleading statement by MVP. One of you was told by MVP that MVP is working with Williams. Williams is only working with MVP to receive gas from the MVP Main Line. Williams is not involved in MVP South Gate. People have reported MVP saying that the South Gate pipeline would run in the Williams right of way. The South Gate pipeline will not be in the existing Williams footprint. There is no documented public need for the South Gate pipeline. MVP has one buyer, Public Service North Carolina. PSNC is an affiliate, an investor in MVP. Williams Transco meets PSNC's need for gas. Williams can expand to meet additional demand without necessarily taking more private planning. The South Gate pipeline will transport gas to Alamance County, North Carolina. Alamance County Commissioner unanimously passed a resolution in opposition to South Gate. The North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality sent a letter to FERC stating, "We remain unconvinced that this South Gate project is necessary." MVP has guaranteed a 15, maybe 14% return on the MVP Main Line and has asked FERC for the same guarantee for South Gate. It is wrong to take people's property for private profit. You, like Alamance and North Carolina, have a voice. It would be wrong for you to silently condone MVP South Gate and MVP's violation of Pennsylvania County citizens who want nothing more than to live undisturbed on their own land. Thank you. This is the five-minute version. I hope you will read it.
Thank you, Ms. Whitehead. Next up is Philip Hudson.
Yes, 5-2 from Glass District, Hudson. From Drive 100, again. The pipe I'm to and opposed to the pipeline for the danger. Just had one blow up. Any other state, I'm sure y'all very bad. It's on the news. Some of the pipelines get exposed and causes four-wheelers to come on your property without permission. The pipelines do not. Even if they're there and see it, they do not in any way interfere with them. They don't want them to happen. It's causing ruts and damages of pipeline, but I've had them to tell me they couldn't stop it. People, once the pipeline's there, they tend to take it like it's public property, and it's hard to control it. I've got to tell the deputies, the state troopers, and all of them, except the game warden most of all, because they go in there with four-wheelers and catch them. But it's really the problem for me. You have real dishonest representatives on the pipeline. I'm not talking about the ones that's doing it, cutting it. I have nothing but good for them, but for the ones that's coming and trying to get your property. You can't believe nothing they tell you. You're paying taxes on land. It's not worth near as much after the pipeline comes as it was. It's very limited use of it, and I too don't think that they have a right to take your land, which is sensitive what they're doing. And I appreciate your help. I'm trying to keep them away, and I thank them.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Down to, it's like Jenny Richardson.
My name is Dean Richardson. I'd like to say good evening, and I appreciate this opportunity to stand here and to, I got a couple of items that I wanted to address the board on. About a week before the elections, midterm elections, I get a notice from Halifax that my property is being rezoned to Halifax. I've always paid taxes in Pennsylvania County, and I need to get some clarification on that. We were not notified of anybody but a week before the holiday election. I've been there for approximately 25 years, always paying taxes in Pennsylvania County, land taxes, everything. But all of a sudden, everything is switched to Halifax, and I didn't understand why. I just hope the board didn't give me an answer. And secondly, my daughter, who lived there at my house, she was notified that she may have to start sending her daughter to Halifax school because of the rezoning, which I think is, that's part of the thing. She's only fine, and we're talking about taking her out of a school system that she's familiar with. She's familiar with the teachers and the faculty that's sat there to take her and send her to Halifax, and I can even tell you where the closest elementary school is in Halifax. I really, I probably go over softball. I really, I probably go over to South Park. That means you would probably go with Buzz Howard. I just, I don't see the purpose in it. But I'd appreciate it if the board could get me out of this, give me something to understand why this is necessary. For twenty-five years, I paid taxes in Pittsylvania County, no problem. I worked for Pittsylvania County School System. And it, it, I don't see why it makes sense. That's about all I have, and I appreciate the board for this. Thank you.
Mr. Richardson, can you give your, you've got his name and all, senior county attorney, please. Thank you, Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir.
We're down to Josh Richardson, looks like.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Julia Richardson, and my problem is pretty much the same as my brother just has stated. I have lived at my property for over fifty years, which is located in Southern Virginia. And all of a sudden, frozen places have been pushed around, which I have voted at Darrow High School for the last forty-one years. I have been informed that my kids may have to start going to Halifax school, which now they spend anywhere from thirty to forty-five minutes bus ride per day. That's two in front of the school that they attend at. That's just how close I live to school. But if I send them to Halifax, they're looking at anywhere from a two to three-hour bus ride per day. My kids are very important to me, and I cannot see uprooting them from a school system that they have known all their life and sending them to a school system that they know nothing about, no teachers or anything. And I would like to know where this line has been moved to that's supposed to have put my property in Halifax. And just like my brother said, about a week before election, we just noticed nobody's aware of it. And it saddens my heart to know that it caused so much confusion that some people got so frustrated that they didn't even vote. I personally know a lady that became so frustrated that she refused to vote. And that is a shame because that's a hard fought for right that everybody should be proud of. And I am proud of my county, Pittsylvania County. I have lived here all my life, which is fifty-nine years. I have served Pittsylvania County Schools for twenty years. I love my county. I think we have the best county around. I greatly and truly do not want to be known as the Pittsylvania County, not against the county, but I just love Pittsylvania County. Thank you all for the last, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Richardson, if you don't mind, would you give your name to the attorney too and all?
Good evening. I'm Nina Boyston, and I live in Callensburg. I am working not too far from here at WKBY in Chatham. And I'm here as a citizen, a concerned citizen, who have, I've been speaking with some of the, they call them the misassigned voters. And I don't know how much you all actually knew about what was going on that caused all the heartfelt confusion, but I'll tell you as quickly as I can that there was a, there was a letter that was sent out on October the sixteenth to, to the voters, to the citizens in that community. And election was, was just a few weeks away. So everyone wasn't even aware of the fact that they were going to have to vote someplace else. They, they, they were told that now they're no longer Pittsylvania County citizens, but they're still having to pay their, one gentleman just spoke about the hundred and twenty dollars on December the twentieth to Pittsylvania, to Pittsylvania County. And it's like, okay, if I have to vote in Halifax, why am I paying, still paying in Pittsylvania County? Where am I supposed to? There's so much confusion, and it didn't happen, happen. So the, it didn't happen, the confusion didn't happen. What we were trying to do was just have the voter registrar push back all these changes until the day, even the day after elections, so that the, the citizens could continue to just vote where they knew they were supposed to vote. And someone was, they were actually, and you probably have seen it, he received his voter registration card and telling him to go to Ringo. So he went to Ringo. When he got there, they told him, no, you're not to vote here, you have to go to Pittsylvania County. And we had people at the same address, but where they were supposed to vote, two were able to vote in Pittsylvania County, and the others were told to go someplace else. That caused a lot of confusion, and it also caused people to think voter suppression, that they not want us to vote, what's going on here? No one was explained, nothing was explained to all of these taxpaying citizens. And they're, they're called misassigned voters, and we just see it as they're disenfranchised voters. So please, please bring some resolution to all this confusion. That's, I know you can't talk right now, I sure wish you could, but thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Boyston. That completes the list of folks that signed up, the hearing of the citizens. We will move to public hearing rezonings pursuant to Article Five, Division Six of Pittsylvania County zoning ordinance. The Board of Citizens has been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issue and zoning map change in support of said order. In accomplishing this important task, the Board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of Pittsylvania County. The Board must ensure that all its decisions and regulations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan in the best interest of Pittsylvania County, its citizens, and its prosperity. I'll open the public hearing for case number one at seven thirty-seven, and call on Mr. Greg Sides.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Case R dash one eight dash zero two four. Donald Mustang has petitioned to rezone a total of nine point three-three acres. Two parcels of land located off State Road seven fourteen, Richardson Lane, and the Jam River Election District from R one residential suburban subdivision district to A one agricultural district to make the zoning consistent with the adjacent land that you already own. Once the property is rezoned to A one, then all uses listed under section thirty-five dash one seventy-eight are permitted use. Planning Commission with no opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request.
Mr. Mustang?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything you'd like to add, Chairman?
No, sir. The rest of the board will speed up.
Okay. I will close the public hearing, seven thirty-eight. Your board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, in the case of R dash one eight dash zero two four, I would like to make the motion that we rezone from R one to A one.
Motion made by Mr. Davis, seconded by Dr. Miller. There's any discussion on the motion. Seeing none, please cast your votes. All votes have been cast, please record your votes. Motion carried unanimously. Mr. Mustang, your property has been rezoned, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank the board. I will open the public hearing for case number two at seven thirty-nine. Mr. Sides.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Case of R dash one eight dash zero two five. Jesse Hancock has petitioned to rezone a total of thirty-three point two eight acres. Four parcels of land located on State Road six ninety-four, David Giles Lane, and on State Road seven eighteen, State Path Road, in the Chatham Larry Election District from R one residential suburban subdivision district to A one agricultural district for agricultural purposes. Once the property is rezoned to A one, all uses listed under section thirty-five dash one seventy-eight are permitted use. The Planning Commission with opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request with the proppers as submitted. And the proppers, I'll state in the annual packet, but I will emphasize the six proppers. Proper one, mobile home parks shall be prohibited. Proper two, no swine shall be allowed on the premises. Number three, commercial agriculture, including the use of industrial manure spreading, shall be prohibited. Number four, no single wide mobile homes other than the existing one on the property. Number five, a buffer of trees shall be kept between adjoining landowners. And number six, these proppers will run in perpetuity. Staff summary is enclosed in your board packet, and Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hancock is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Hancock, do you have anything you'd like to add, sir?
Just that I tried, I offered the proppers based on concerns I was receiving from various people and meeting with the planning department. So we came up with those, I came up with those. Phil Idens said I wasn't having any intent to do any of these. And when it's all said and done, I'm going to, I'd like to reconfigure all the property in one or two parcels and try to address all the concerns, you know, the proppers that complained to somebody where people were asking questions.
And no one signed up to speak to that, so I planned to, I planned to build a house there, and have a couple horses, a couple furrows. Okay. No one signed up, so I closed the public hearing at seven forty-two, and stay close to Mr. Hancock, case the board has to record. Yes, sir. I would like to offer motion in case R dash one eight dash zero two five, that we approve with the proppers, Mr. Boyston. Motion made by Dr. Miller, seconded by Mr. Barber. Any discussion on the motion? I just have one. I've been involved in this for a while. I've talked with Mr. Hancock, I've talked with several citizens, and I want to compliment you and the citizens of the area. They got together, talked about this, worked it out, and I think everybody walked away pretty pleased. And I'll tell you, Mr. Hancock, I got some calls after the planning meeting, and the folks were very appreciative and receptive to that and look forward to having you as a neighbor and look forward to being a good neighbor. So sometimes you just need to sit down and talk with each other, and I appreciate y'all working that out. I thought that was a good testimony to the citizens and the type people we have in Pittsylvania County. So thank you very much, sir. No other discussion, please record your votes. Okay. Motion carried unanimously. Mr. Hancock, your property has been rezoned. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We're down to case number three, and I will open the public hearing at seven forty-three. Mr. Sides.
Case R dash one eight dash zero two six. Larry and Cameron Edwards have petitioned to rezone two point eight-four acres located on State Road six seventy-two, Pittsfield Road, in the Stan River Election District from R one residential suburban subdivision district to A one agricultural district to allow for placement of a second dwelling, a single mobile home on the property for a family owner. Once the property is rezoned to A one, all uses listed under section thirty-five dash one seventy-eight are permitted. The Planning Commission with no opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request. Staff summary is enclosed in your packet, and Mr. Chairman, Mr. Edwards is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Edwards? Do you have anything you'd like to add, sir?
No, sir.
Okay. Go forward, in case they got any questions. We did have one person sign up. So Mr. Edwards, Mr. Edwards will let you step to the side and get Patricia Taylor. Patricia Taylor. Patricia Taylor. Okay. I guess she left. We will close the public hearing at seven forty-five. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, in case R dash one eight dash zero two six, I move that we rezone two point eight-four acres located on State Road six seventy-two and Pittsfield Road, on Pittsfield Road and Stan River District from R one residential suburban subdivision to A one agricultural district.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Davis. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast, please record your votes. Motion carried unanimously. Mr. Edwards, your property has been rezoned.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're down to other public hearings. Each person addressing the board under a public hearing shall step up, give his or her name and district, and are his or her place of residency for non-county citizens in an audible tone of voice for the record. Unless further time is granted by the chairman, she'll limit, she'll limit his or her address to three minutes. Speakers for whom she'll be limited to ten minutes. Speakers shall include their remarks at that time unless the consent of the board is affirmatively given to extend the speaker's allotted time. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who does not sign up. First item is public hearing, solid waste ordinance change. Mr. Richard Hicks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We currently have three proposed changes to the solid waste ordinance that we have advertised for. The first one is a change where our existing ordinance requires that trash be disposed of at convenience center that day. That's all we've worked out, we couldn't have people bring this in different methods. So we're proposing to strike that from the ordinance. The second change would allow citizens to bring whole tires to the rain field based on a fee established by this board. And the third change would allow, put at disposal of solid waste from someone outside of the county if they're willing to pay the fee that was established by this board. Also, those are the three basic proposed changes to the ordinance.
Any questions? Mr. Hicks, no one signed up for this, so it's our board's pleasure. Chairman.
I'd like to move that there are to be proposed changes to the solid waste ordinance being implemented.
Motion made by Dr. Miller. Seconded by Barbara. Is there further discussion on the motion?
I'd like to say that we've had, we've had a lot of discussion just in our work sections, and allowing for tires to be disposed of in the landfill, hopefully will keep down some litter on the side of the road. Also, a lot of people, our citizens, did not know over the years that garbage that was placed in the boxes and compacture should have been in bags. So when we started tightening up enforcement in the county, staff began to enforce the rules and regulations, that was, that was pointed out, and so the board wanted to change that. If it makes sense, put cardboard boxes, for instance, in a plastic bag. So these things were done at the request of some citizens. So these things were done at the request of some citizens and also staff pointed out some things that needed to be changed. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Any other comments or questions? Okay, please cast your votes. All votes have been cast, please record your vote. Motion carries unanimously. Down to number two, and I'll open that public hearing at 7:50. And it's a public hearing, lease of tower space at Dambro Middle School. Mr. Hicks again.
That's been contacted by two Sabre companies that have expressed an interest in selling self-powered equipment called the Kentup Tower, which is behind the Dambro Middle School. We currently have one lease on an existing title, which is the tower behind the courthouse, and that lease is with AT&amp;T, and they're currently paying us $1,825 a month. The first county we talked to on the title, the line of school, offered $1,700 a month that would increase about 2% every year. I kind of laughed at it, and I said, "You need to come up with something better than that." So they came back with a second offer, which is now $2,202 a month, and they saved 2% of each year, and they were starting paying us a hundred, you know, and once they put their equipment on the tower or January 1st, 2019, whichever occurs first. We have a second company that has expressed interest. And I think that is actually, I believe, AT&amp;T again, and what we'd like to ask the board or office this evening is if the second company is interested in the first, first company already is, that you authorize the county staff to finalize the lease agreements and to authorize the county administrator to sign the necessary documents for the public leases. Before he can lease property, we do have to have a public hearing, that's the purpose of the public hearing this evening.
We did have one person sign up, Mr. Harold Paulson.
Mr. Chairman, I moved the wrong one, so it's okay. I'll forgive my time.
Okay, Mr. Paulson, thank you. I'm sorry. All right, I'll close the public hearing at 7:52. You entertain your board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize the county administrator to finalize the lease terms for the two cellular carriers and execute any and all related necessary documents of said leases.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Davis. Is there any discussion on the motion? Yes, sir, Mr. Blackstock.
Do we have, are we doing the study or having them do, run some tests to make sure that these two, the use of our tower, they might want to interfere with anything else? Will they have to pay for that?
The more our Kentup Tower, the county, under our current contract, that they will be, two towers will make some modifications to the Kentup Tower. There will have to be some modifications to that tower for our equipment, but we'll also have our engineers, you know, do a thing about it. But if it's a quick.
In the lease, one thing I learned from Jim Davis is, we make them do a load analysis at their cost, they also do have a sound engineer make sure that their thing does not interfere with our frequency. So those have to be done, they have to pay for it, it has to pass before we report the lease. It's in the building codes.
All right, just one other thing, if we've rented anybody else to sign the contract, we want to make sure we don't interfere with their. Is that in there?
It's all in there, that they, they have experts coming to do that.
They always, our people make sure that it works, not their engineer.
I just have a follow-up question to Mr. Blackstock. I read in there that we have to do some modifications and upfitting of our towers just to be able to serve properly. Are we doing any additional upfitting to accommodate this equipment, and if we are, or we pass those calls from the?
Our modifications are required to place our equipment, so, you know, if we didn't have a Sabre company, we would still have to make same modifications.
What would happen is, building code change after we built it, and they require a deeper or more structurally significant footers, is that correct?
Yeah. Wind speed change, it was designed to be saying 110 mile an hour. We had six more modifications for our structure that has to be saying, I think, 130 mile an hour. Do we have that, if we tell us the changes, okay?
Any other questions? Please cast your votes. Please record your votes. Motion carries unanimously. I'll open the public hearing for item number three at 7:56. Public hearing for procurement policy changes. Mr. Hunter.
Yes, I'm pinch hitting for Connie Gibson and Kim Vanderheide tonight. Recently, our auditors informed us that there's been some changes on the federal level related to accepting federal funds and grants that we need to make to our Chapter 25 of our code relating to procurement policy and involving some conflict of interest. These changes are legally required, and they deal with micropurchases, small purchases, and other things. They're contained in your packet in yellow. These were written by our auditors. We have to change our policy if we want to accept any federal funds, so county staff recommends following the public hearing to make a motion to adopt the revisions to Chapter 25 procurement policy as presented.
No one signed up, so I'll close the public hearing at 7:57. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the revisions to the Chapter 25 procurement policy to the Pennsylvania County Code as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Palmer, go have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Yes, sir, Mr. Blackstock.
Procurement is an issue that the public really watches close and appeared some comments earlier tonight. When I came on this board, the Pennsylvania County procurement policy that I remember hadn't been updated since the eighties, and that was one of the first questions that I had when I began to dabble into this job. And I, it makes me feel really good, number one, that we have certified now staff procurement agent, and we're keeping our policies updated. Some things that you read, we could not participate in, called the public procurement, public-private procurement procedure, which is very important. And so those, these updates that we're doing, they are very important, and I'm proud of the fact that the staff is standing on top of this and feeling very proactive in making those procurement changes.
Any other questions or comments? I would agree, and for the citizens, we enter no contracts without going through procurement process and putting bids out for everything we do. And we're transparent about all of that, and all of that did occur before anything went out as far as in relationship to anything that occurs within the county.
And one other point I'd like to make with procurement, we cannot take a vote in closed session. So, you know, if you hear these things, "We vote in closed session about procurement, anything else," it's illegal to vote in closed session. If we make a decision, if we come to a consensus, we have to come out in closed session and vote publicly on these procurement actions. It's illegal for us to do that. So if you hear that, that's wrong, or if it took place, somebody could go to jail. And I can tell you, I've been a 31 years in jail, and I don't want to go back.
Just to put up the record.
But I did just then.
He didn't serve 30.
He didn't have feelings.
That's right.
Some days it felt like that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Please cast your vote. Okay, all votes have been cast, or the motion carries unanimously. Unfinished business on the staff. Mr. Smithery.
Yes, sir.
We're down to new business, 12A, approval of federal grant administration policy and conflict of interest policy. Mr. Hunt.
Yes, this is the, this is the second shoot to what we just did. What this is, is we're updating, this is not in our county code, that's why we don't have to have a public hearing. This is in our policy manual, which the board can adopt without a public hearing. And I'll pinch hit it again for, for Ms. Gibson and Ms. Vanderheide. And what this does is, is we, based on our auditor's recommendation, we now, we require some changes based on micro purchasing limits and simplified acquisition thresholds for financial assistance. In addition, we changed some things about the conflict of interest policy. It's all in your packet, and it's all required by auditor for us to dabble in federal funds. It's just another shoot to what we just did.
Any questions for Mr. Hunt? Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt the federal awards administration policy and conflict of interest policy as required by the Office of Management and Budget.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, go have a second. Seconded by Mr. Palmer. Is there further discussion or questions? Seeing none, please record your vote. Please tally your vote. Motion carries unanimously. Again, appropriation of tobacco grant, SB MP feasibility study. Mr. Seitz.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'm covering for Ms. Vanderheide now, so that she know how fortunate it is to take several hours to cover her work. But in, you've seen your packet that the county participated or cooperated with the Virginia Tobacco Commission on a feasibility study for the Southern Virginia Multimodal Park in an amount of $140,000. We received reimbursement for those funds from the Tobacco Commission. There is still some potential costs out there that may be pending, but we have received the money from the Tobacco Commission, and what we need to do now is appropriate that money to the county's industrial development fund.
Board's question.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion authorizing appropriation of $140,000 for a Southern Virginia Multimodal Park study and authorizing financial directive to increase this appropriation to cover any additional costs approved, approved and paid by the Tobacco Commission.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, go have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sears. Is there further discussion on the motion?
I'd just like to point out, especially to the citizens of Stan River District, because sometimes when people shortchange, they'll want to go on the corner end of the county. But this is $140,000 that the Tobacco Commission did appropriate, just to get the study over there, what some people call the Burlington plot. They'll plop a lot of that, so we all move forward with this and taking action, and hopefully one day we will see the results of this work.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Any further discussion? Please record your vote. Motion carries unanimously. We're down to 12C, Dambro Regional Foundation grant appropriation, Sheriff's salary study and library study. Mr. Seitz.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, the board has discussed a couple of projects that were worthy of funding, one being a classification and compensation study for the sheriff's office, and the second being a feasibility study for future library expansion of the Pennsylvania County Library System. It was asked that these parties look into funding, potential matching funding from the Dambro Regional Foundation. Those funds have been received in terms of the 50% match. The total amount of the study for the sheriff is $12,000, the total amount of the study for the library is $30,000. So the Dambro Regional Foundation has approved $6,000 for the sheriff's study and $15,425 for the library study. These appropriate, these amounts need to be appropriated with the remaining funds coming from our current grant funds and the money that's left in those funds for closed down and completed projects. So that's the motion that we need tonight is to appropriate that amount and match it with the local funds from the existing grants completion form.
Thank you, Mr. Seitz.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Blackstock.
I make a motion to accept the BRF grants in the amount of $6,000 for the sheriff and $15,425 for the library and appropriate these amounts along with the remaining $21,425 from local funds, all being existing in the grants fund from completed grant projects.
Question made by Dr. Miller.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Davis. Is there any further discussion or comments from the board? I'll just make one real quick. I think it's important, and Mr. Blackstock just touched on it, about the tobacco grant funds that are helping, are helping on this particular project, and the Dambro Regional Foundation is helping on these projects. But I've said this several times at our economic development announcements, it's just amazing how cooperative our regional, Dambro Regional Industrial, Dambro Regional Foundation is in moving economic development and other projects forward within Pennsylvania County and within Regional Industrial Facilities Authority, and we couldn't do it without them and without the Tobacco Commission. So when you see any of those folks that sit on those boards or do those things, because it takes time to do them all, please take a moment to say thank you to them, because they're doing a lot to help improve both Pennsylvania County and our region, and I think it's important. And I'm just, I just think maybe, maybe we all, we all like to hear thank you sometimes when we do something. Those folks are doing a lot of work to help, helping every one of us, and so I appreciate it if you, if you would do that when you see them out. Thank you. Please record your vote. Please tally your vote. Motion carries unanimously. We're down to, help with all the carryover, Mr. Smithery.
Yes, sir. Annually, it is not uncommon for the Health Department to not expend all of its preventative funds that the county provides for their services last year. Last year, they had about $153,000, I believe, remaining in their annual operating budget, which was returned to the county. This year, there was $62,000 returned to the county as unused operational appropriations. As usual, they have asked to have those funds reallocated to their department. However, just like last year, it's our recommendation that those funds remain in the general fund as unused operations be counted in our fund balance. That is staff recommendations brought to you this evening.
Board's pleasure.
Did anybody here give us any comments from the Health Department? Is this just something that was automatic in the past, and we decided we were going to change it?
Kim would be the best person to say that, and I don't know that Dayton or Greg can vouch for her on that one. All I can tell you, since I've been here, we've not returned those funds. I can't vouch for what we did in previous years.
Just to clarify, if they came up, they had a big need that surpassed their current budget, they could come to this board. they could come to this board and ask for additional funds. It would be up to this board to determine to give back up to the sixty-one thousand or even more if it was, if we had a catastrophic, we had a catastrophic situation or something. I just want to clarify here.
Were they aware, were they aware that we were going to do this tonight? Has any discussions been, I mean, I guess what I'm asking you, Mr. Smithery, is if you talk to the folks all the way out and let them know that we were going to do that, the board was going to decide on this action?
No, sir, I have not. In fact, we have very, very little, if any, contact with the Health Department on an operational basis.
But if we, if we, if we had this tonight and put it in this, and have it in the columns, and not return it to them, as Mr. Warren stated, if they are upset with us, if they've got a specific need there, they certainly can come back and ask us.
Absolutely.
And we did this exact same thing last year.
Yeah, last year. Hundred fifty-three, I think. It's considerable.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We deny the Health Department's request to obtain FY eighteen funds in the amount of sixty-one thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars, twenty-seven cents for fiscal year nineteen usage.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Davis, seconded by Mr. Skiers. Any discussion on the motion? Please record your votes. Please tally the vote. Motion carries six to one. Okay, we're down to twelve E, new open space land use agreement for 2019. Mr. Hunt.
Uh, yes, Jimmy and Amy Blanks, um, currently have a hundred and twenty-one acres in the Environmental Quality and Citizens Program administered by the USDA Natural Resources Conservation Service. They have, are attempting to enter into open space agreement tonight to take thirty-six point three oh of those acres and place it in our county's open space land use. There's different rates for those land uses, and actually, as you can see, as confirmed by the Honorable Shirley Hammack, currently, based on the US government's deferment, we're, um, not taking in one thousand one hundred fifty-five dollars sixty-eight cents. Now, by shifting thirty-six point three oh acres out of the hundred and twenty-one acres into our land use program, we actually, um, will be making, tax-wise, a hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents. So, uh, the county, uh, the county staff recommends the board approve the attached open space agreement for 2019 for Jimmy and Amy Blanks and authorize the county administrator to sign any necessary related documentation.
Board's pleasure.
I make a motion to approve the open space agreement for 2019 for Jimmy and Amy Blanks and authorize the county administrator to sign any necessary related documentation.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Farmer. Is there further discussion on the motion? I'm sorry, seconded by Mr. Ball. Any further discussion on the motion? Please cast your vote. Please record your vote. Motion carries with them. We're down to twelve F, uh, meals tax refund request for Mountain Food Services LLC. Mr. Hunt.
Yeah, I'll pinch in for Kim Vanderheide. Uh, Mountain Food Services LLC, which I believe is Bojangles, uh, up in Blair's area. They, uh, overreported their gross receipt amounts and paid meals tax on, on the wrong amount for several years. I think they paid on their gross receipts instead of their debt receipts. Anyway, um, they, uh, have corrected that mistake, and they've provided the county's commissioner of revenue with corrected figures for all the years in question. Pittsman County Code, uh, section six dash six point two, refund of local taxes assessed to pay in error. Mountain Food Services LLC is due and owing a meals, meals tax overpayment refund in the amount of thirty thousand nine hundred twenty-two dollars and thirty-four cents. The Honorable Ben Short has determined that they do not qualify for any interest on the refund. However, we are, um, obligated to, uh, pay them for the overpayment of the meals taxes. So, following consultation with both the county's commissioner of revenue and treasurer, county staff recommends the board to approve refund thirty thousand nine hundred twenty-two dollars and thirty-four cents to Mountain Food Services LLC due to meals tax overpayment. Authorize the county administrator to sign any and all related necessary documentation.
Board's pleasure. Motion made by Mr. Farmer. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Miller. Is there any discussion on the motion? I, I, I don't have any discussion. I'm, I'm kind of, to my own opinion, we should give them their money back. But also, where we had something in the code or policies or something that you can only go back so far? And you know what that limit is? Because we went back ten years on this, I know.
Well, it says, um.
Is this three or is it ten?
We're only, we're only going back to 2015 on this.
Okay, three. Then you're doing it for ten.
They, they overpaid us for ten years, but we only, if you turn to page two thirty-six of your packet, it shows that we're paying them for, uh, 2015 all, but they overpaid us for ten years.
Yeah, that's what I read, that they overpaid us for ten years, and I remembered that we had a limit, so.
And that's based on our low code and state law.
Please cast your vote. Please record your vote. Motion carries with them. Award of Pay and Classification Study for Sheriff's Department.
Yes, good evening. At the July twenty-fifth Personnel Committee meeting held this year, there was a discussion with regard to salary compression issues within the Sheriff's Department. The county has received a quote from Springstead to complete a classification and compensation study for the Sheriff's Department in the amount of twelve thousand dollars. Springstead is the company that completed the county's previous salary study in 2017. The Sheriff's Department was requested to check for grants to cover the cost or a portion of the cost of the study. Sheriff Taylor has secured a local grant in the amount of six thousand dollars from the Danville Regional Foundation, which will cover fifty percent of the total cost. The remaining fifty percent will be covered by local funds remaining in the grants fund from completed grant projects. Any costs in excess of the quoted twelve thousand dollars will be paid through the sheriff's budget. County staff recommends the board award the classification and compensation study to bring it to Springstead and allow the contract to be amended to include the Sheriff's Department, with the understanding that the Sheriff's Department actively participate in discussions concerning adopting the county's personnel plan upon completion and implementation of the study.
Any questions on this? Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to award the classification, health compensation study to Springstead and corporate and allow their contract to be amended to include the Sheriff's Department in the classification and compensation study.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Farmer, seconded by Mr. Blackstock. Any discussion on the motion?
Only my comment would be this. When this comes back, Mr. Smithery, you're going to have to really dig deep to find the money for this.
Yes, sir. I agree. And we will do our best.
Okay, uh, please record your vote. Please tally the vote. Motion carries with them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anfield. We're down to thirteen A, appointment, Pennsylvania County Service Authority. Mr. Skiers.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I make motion to appoint Mr. Harville to the Pennsylvania County Service Authority for a four-year term starting on January first of 2019.
Second.
Uh, motion made by Mr. Skiers, seconded by Mr. Farmer. Any discussion on the motion?
I'd just like to say that Mr. Harville has requested to stay on the board for another term. He's been working on a few projects that are going to really enhance the county, and I probably would best let him stay on board.
Any other stuff? All votes have been cast. Please record your vote. Motion carries with them. Uh, appointment, Pennsylvania County Soil and Water Conservation District Board of Directors. Mr. McCuster.
Yes, Mr. Tom Kates currently serves on the Pennsylvania Soil and Water Conservation District Board of Directors. His term is set to expire on December the thirty-first, 2018, and he is eligible for another four-year term beginning on January first, 2019. County staff recommends the reappointment of Mr. Kates to the Pennsylvania Soil and Water Conservation District Board of Directors for a four-year term beginning on January first, 2019. And this is a county-wide appointment, not district-specific.
Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, uh, before I, I'll leave, I would say, for the first one is board, Mr. Pritchett, Alfred Pritchett, down this post as long as I can remember. And about two years ago, he retired. He started trying to find a replacement, and he's been gone. And I think he's done a great job, and if he wanted to, a long process, talked to a lot of farmers, and I, I want to make a motion to reappoint Mr. Kates to Pennsylvania County Soil and Water Conservation District Board for a four-year term beginning on January one, 2019.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Farmer, seconded by Mr. Skiers. Any discussion on the motion? Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. Please record your vote. Motion carries with them. We're down to appointment and replication of T-LAC elections of the Leesville Lake Association representative. Mr. McCuster.
Yes, the T-LAC appointments are for a one-year term beginning on January the first, 2019. T-LAC recently elected Dave Reeves as its new president for the 2019 year. Um, in your board packet, you do have a copy of their meeting minutes showing that he was voted by the T-LAC members to represent on the Leesville Lake Association. County staff recommends the board ratify T-LAC's appointment of Mr. Reeves to serve as its Leesville Lake Association representative for a one-year term beginning on January first, 2019.
Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that will state for Mr. Rivers to join as a Leesville Lake Association representative on T-LAC for a one-year term beginning January one of 2019.
Do I have a second? Motion made by Mr. Farmer, seconded by Mr. Davis. Please cast your votes. Please record your votes. Motion carries with them. Uh, appointment of library study advisory committee. Mr. Skiers.
At the August business meeting, the board approved a resolution calling for a feasibility study of libraries and potential expansion plan, which we talked about tonight, and the appointment of a library advisory committee to assist in the study. County staff recommends the board appoint the following individuals to the library advisory committee to assist with the feasibility study. These, uh, recommended appointments are followed. Lisa Toop, Alice Shelton, Teresa Petty, Jesse Barksdale, Shannon S. Stoller, Martha Walker, Angela Wells, Janice, Janie Davis, Phyllis Roach, and Kathleen Clark. And their specific districts are outlined on page two forty-three of your, um, packet.
Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to appoint the, the individuals as called up by our county attorney, Mr. Hunt, to the library advisory committee as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Skiers. Is there any discussion on the motion? Please cast your vote. Please record your vote. Motion carries with them. Uh, matters from the work session.
I think we have one more.
Oh, one more, I'm sorry, we have an add-on. Thirteen E, uh, appointment for the DSS Board. Mr. Farmer.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate, uh, Mr. Philip Adams to the DSS Board. Will you agree with that for a second?
Do I have a second?
This is going to fill the unexpired term of Gracie Mays, who submitted her resignation this morning and was accepted by the county.
Okay, so it's not four years.
It's a two.
You want to mend that motion?
Yes, sir, I'm in.
You, you want me to interrupt?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I would like to point out, Mr. Adams, he's a prominent member of the coastal community and a known model of life, and he was a retired fireman from the city and runs a construction business. I think he did a great job. He's in Rock Slide, Nevada. I know he'll be real good. He's got a passion to help the people.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Any further discussion? Please cast your vote. Please record your vote. Motion carries with them. Didn't mean to skip you, Mr. Farmer.
That's okay.
Uh, matters from the work session, uh, solid waste was allowed in the, the work session. Can we take care of that?
We've given, uh, Mr. Farmer a cheat sheet up there.
I can present it. What should we do?
Give us a little definition.
Sure. At our, uh, at our work session this evening, we talked about some minor modifications to the way we administer the solid base fee in response to some concerns that have been expressed over the last week or so. The majority, if not supermajority, of the complaints revolve around two issues. One, the twenty-dollar fee that is required to inspect a potentially uninhabitable dwelling. And the second is our elderly and disabled person exemption. Uh, staff has, has conferred about this issue and presents two recommendations. One is that we do our best to determine habitability via computer using the information we have available at the ancestor's office and only require inspection when our records cannot otherwise verify uninhabitability. And we also recommend that we completely do away with the twenty-dollar fee and refund it to anyone that has paid to date. Our second recommendation is that the board consider allowing or directing the legislative committee to review our current elderly and disabled citizens exemption ordinance and seek, uh, recommendations to modify the income threshold as well as the, um, beneficiary amount, which is currently capped at three hundred dollar, three hundred dollars of deduction from the real estate tax. We recommend that the legislative committee take a look at that at their meeting.
Mr. Farmer.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant exemption requests via desk review when possible, and that on-site inspection fees be rescinded and refunded, and also that the board refer to the elderly and disabled exemption ordinance to the legislative committee for review and adjustment recommendations.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Farmer, seconded by Mr. Blackstock. Any discussion?
I think, uh, it would be wise to point out that these changes are meant, are being made directly as a result of public input. I think, I don't know about the rest of this board, what I do know, because I heard some of it earlier this afternoon, but we've received a lot of calls, especially about the twenty dollars and, uh, pay for, for the twenty dollars to ask, uh, the county to come out and look at, uh, the buildings themselves, as far as solid base fee. And also, the second part of this is something we don't give a lot of attention to, but it's important because we talk about the elderly and poor people in this county a lot. Right now, that limit is at eighteen thousand dollars. And I can, you know, anybody in this room that can run a household on eighteen thousand dollars a year is a lot more financially savvy than I am. And, and the, that limit needs to be raised to give the people that, that need it the most in this county a break. And this, right now, the break would be up to three hundred dollars in real estate. And sixty dollars, this back code, this back code of Virginia, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hunt.
It says, it's by the local code.
Sixty dollars of the hundred and twenty dollar, uh... Sixty dollars of the hundred and twenty dollar fee, solid waste fee. This, this is an important part of enacting all this, because it's a lot of people that that, I think it's the Allen, pointed out earlier tonight, it's a lot of people right here that that hundred and twenty dollars, I can't imagine, well, I can imagine, because I, I've not always been in a position I'm in there financially, I'm just a citizen of the world, but can you imagine somebody that's living on eighteen thousand dollars a year, having to come up with a hundred and twenty dollars? And if they, if they are, limited to eighteen thousand dollars, probably paying the second part of their real estate tax at Christmas too, or the holidays. And so, this is an important part of it. I appreciate the staff running this in at the last minute, realizing this needs to be changed. We do need to change it, it's important. And we need to look after the most needy people, especially this time of year, Thanksgiving and Christmas time, we have a tendency to look, look around and want to help people, but this, these people are living on eighteen thousand dollars all year long. And that's not a lot of money. You ask me, twenty-five thousand dollars would be a tough way to run a household.
You had to do all the pulling, and you learned how to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock, for your comments. I would remind the public, just to, and say it a second time, because I know this entire board feels passionate about, we'll be sure the message out there that Mr. Blackstock just said, you know, if your household income is in those kind of levels, you need to reach out to your county, because it's already in the ordinance that you can get the relief on not only the solid waste fees, but you can get it on your real estate tax. So if you have family members that fall into that category, or you have people that you know are in that category, let's help remind them of that, and let's help them, because sometimes, for the same reasons you just mentioned, they may not be getting the newspaper, you know, the information, or they may not be seeing it in publications. So if you know of those folks, let's reach out, because we certainly want to, that's why the ordinance is there, to help the less fortunate. So let's be sure. Thank you, Mr. Blackstock, for pointing that out. Please cast your votes. Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. We're down to a board member reports, according to Mr. Scares.
I really have nothing this week, Mr. Chairman, except to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Palmer.
I don't know, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Palmer.
I didn't have anything until tonight, hearing some of the presenters, or the speakers from the public. The case where these folks are being instructed by neighboring county for their voting and school change, that's very concerning. So I would just like to urge staff, which I know they will, just to look into that matter and keep us apprised of the situation, please. I too, that concerns me. It sounds like that Halifax County is trying to annex some of our property, and our citizens that have been with us for a long time. Mr. Hunt, I trust that you, I saw you out of the room with these folks down here that were annexed in Halifax County, and it bothers me especially, because we're seeing on national news about people that's voting rights are being sometimes repeated upon. And as a veteran, I don't like that at all. I don't agree with everybody on every issue, but I think it's important we have everybody get their input and vote as a way to do that. And I'm sorry that that happened to y'all, and I, I feel like we can trust Mr. Hunt to look into this and let's find out what's going on. The second thing that I would say is, you mentioned earlier that we are a county of almost sixty-five thousand people, and we're the largest county geographically in the state of Virginia. And by the way, I looked at it very closely, and it's only about a point five of a mile or a gust of that we are the largest. But we, Mr. Schumate is a person, he was an elderly gentleman, and I read his obituary, but his mind is sharper than mine, I can't remember his exact age, but he's on in his eighties. But he'd been coming to these meetings ever since I've been on the board of supervisors, and he would come up to that podium, and he would hold our feet to the fire. And he would talk to you afterwards, and it was not always easy for Mr. Schumate to get here because of his health issues, but he came. And you, we look around as supervisors, and one of the things that bothers me the most, as I have served as citizens of my district, is we see the same ten or fifteen people here every meeting, and then we'll see people that show up once sometimes in a lifetime because of an issue, what, they're here for a zoning change or something of that nature. And we, as a democracy, we need to do better and participate. It's easy to get on social media or stand around the country store and complain about what's going on in our country, but if you don't show up to participate and vote and come to these meetings, the people that represent you really don't know how the masses feel, and that's important. And Mr. Schumate was an important part. I didn't always agree with what Mr. Schumate said, but he, he made an effort to be here. He was one of that core ten or fifteen people that had been here for years, holding their feet to the fire, especially about budget issues. And I can, I'll tell you right now, he's probably in heaven looking down the night fussing about his solid waste fee. But anyway, I think Mr. Schumate set an example, and I'm going to miss him, I'm going to miss him at these meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Mr. Davis.
I have nothing to, except the concerns of those that are in my district as far as Southern is concerned. I don't know what's going on with Halifax. The only thing I could have saw there could have been from the, the upper-ups that redistrict the locales for voter registration or voter content, that's the only thing I could see. As far as the county is concerned, I've never known where in Pennsylvania County, that Pennsylvania counties went out and to Halifax County and said, hey, you guys are in my district or in the county. So I don't know what's going on out there, that's a disparity that I'm not pleased with. As a matter of fact, I don't want to lose the voting complex or group of people that we have and I feel just for you. So we're, we're going to, staff will be looking into that, as well as I may have to be talking to a few of our delegates up the ladders, maybe even have to contact the congressmen as well. We need to get, we need to get to the bottom of that. So hopefully we have some more information for you in the future. Thank you.
Dr. Mill.
Well, first of all, I'm very appreciative of the fact that my colleagues here on the board of supervisors have taken time to review the information that was prepared by our good folks out in the community. And I'm going to endeavor not to be overly repetitive, but I just want to kind of try to put a little bit finer point on a couple of things. And first of all, I'm going to want to recognize Mrs. Dartne Neils, and of course, Mr. Neils, and some others out in the audience, that are all members of the Denver Bladers Civically, of which I'm a member. And when a gentleman by the name of Mr. Cameron James came to a meeting of the Denver Bladers Civically, he brought this matter to our attention in the meeting, and that actually raised some significant eyebrows. And for those of us on board, of course, you know, the very first letter in the packet there was drafted with the assistance of several members. And of course, as you see, the letter went to the governor, lieutenant governor, attorney general, commissioner of revenue in Halifax, as well as the commissioner of revenue here in Pennsylvania County. And sub, excuse me, sub, you know I've got a tissue. Subject to that table, if you have one. Okay. Subject, subject, rather, to Mrs. Neils and the letter there. I had the opportunity to draft a letter with the assistance of Mr. Royston and Miss Fran, Miss Fran, what was your last name? Tucker. Miss Fran Tucker there. And my letter, well, not mine, thank you, our letter, also went to Mr. Chris Piper, who is on the Board of Elections, I think he's the chairman of the Board of Elections, and also a Mr. Jay Alcorn. I believe he is an attorney that works with the Board of Elections also. And interestingly enough, we emailed the letter down to those two gentlemen, and it was really a matter of less than an hour, that really probably a half hour or less, we got an immediate response from the folks in Richmond. But this is something that is frankly a bit concerning. And in the last paragraph of the response that we got, I got, we got from the letter says that it was up to the general registrar of the county to determine that the voters were missed, assigned, and reassigned appropriately. Now, I bring that up in this way. Now, not to, and I want to make sure, because we have a meeting here, I want to make absolutely certain in my comments that I am personally not being accusatory regarding our registrar or any of our staff, but the response that we got back from Richmond, when we read it and tried to interpret it correctly, suggested that the registrar here could have helped mitigate some of this in, to some degree. It seemed as if that Mr. Piper's office was likely suggesting that our registrar could have addressed some of this. And so, I believe I'm being correct in feeling that we as a body here governing, governing Pennsylvania County, should be able to either ask the right questions or whatever the correct terminology is to look into that, and that I'm trying to be as generous as possible. Also, now, this is Halifax here, but we may be able to communicate to someone somehow or sometime, maybe our attorney can be of help in this regard. The letter that came out from Halifax says simply, "Dear voter," all right, it does not address a particular person. And with all the junk mail that it received, that could very easily then just cast aside. All right? Now, here's another item that is very telling. Now, this document here comes from Pennsylvania County, and I will share it with anybody that wishes to see, well, you all have, you have a copy, I'll wait. It is addressed to one of the people that is concerning, Stephen Darnell Brandon. Mr. Brandon's address on Pennsylvania County letterhead says thirty-six-three-seven Act Very Road Southern, I think that's near this, all right. And anyway, we were in a meeting down the community just a few days ago, and Mr. Brandon and his wife clearly made us to know this information, that there were four voter-age people living at this exact address. Two of them were allowed to vote, and here's the voter card right here, allowed to vote in Pennsylvania County. And two additional voters living at the very same address were told they had to go over to Halifax. Now, doesn't take a rocket scientist to recognize, as David Calhoun reminded me, to say somewhere that needs to be addressed, all right? And then, of course, finally, the, no, not finally, next to finally, here's our bill for solid waste fee. All right? We understand what may need to happen there. Now, finally, the matter, I think the gentleman back here mentioned, Richard Richardson, all right, mentioned this about either children or grandchildren in schools. All right, I come obviously from the county school. Regulations state very clearly what shall take place at the authority of the superintendent when matters of an address are concerned. And the fact that if a child has completed at least six weeks of school, we don't want to disrupt that child's education and well-being. So to put all of that together, I believe we as a board respectfully need to ask a few direct questions and help these good folk get some satisfaction and let us preserve the dignity of the right to vote. Now, item one. Item two, on a completely different subject. On today, literally today, at about, oh, I guess about mid-afternoon, I got a telephone call from NBC, and it was a call from Lester Holt's producer. And our matters of uranium are capturing the attention of the national news. Now, we don't hear a lot of people out in the public right here talking about the issue of uranium, but I've had enough conversation with enough people here in the county to know that the overwhelming position of the people in the county is that we would like very much to have our health and safety maintained. So I'm just going to say it in front of the media as well as on record, as well as anybody else maybe taking notes, that the word from the producer today was that shortly after Thanksgiving, and possibly around the first of December, they're going to send their correspondent from wherever here to Pennsylvania County, to Chatham, and they're going to want to have some conversations and gather information on both sides of the issue. So what I would like personally to do, and of course, you won't know, you can make, contact me in multiple ways, if you have strong feelings regarding the issue of uranium, please make that known to me, so I can have concrete information to share if I'm the person or one that they want to have a conversation with. Okay? I'm done.
Thank you, Dr. Mill. Uh, Mr. Richardson, I echo the same sentiments of the entire board. We're sorry that happened to you. We're sorry that happened to you. We will ask some questions, and I'm sure staff will be getting back to you with some answers. I also want to recognize Mr. Haywood, an old retired board member here tonight, and we miss you, we appreciate your service, hope you have a great Thanksgiving. On that note, I do want to wish our staff a very happy Thanksgiving. And that was, as I was looking through the agenda and thinking about it being this close to Thanksgiving, I couldn't help but think about, in relationship to this position, how thankful I am. I'm thankful for my treasurer, all of our constitutional officers, thankful for our sheriff and his department, and every one of your deputies that are out there protecting us. And I'm gonna take a few minutes tonight, I know we're getting near the end of the meeting, but I want to go on record as saying, I'm very thankful for this entire board, very thankful. I was recently at the VACO meeting, and several people coming up to me, when they would see my tag, and I was from Pennsylvania County, wanted to know about Pennsylvania County. What's going on? What's all this economic development news I'm hearing? What's this? What's that? And they were so positive, they want to know what's going on, what's changed in Pennsylvania County. And I tell them, it's the people. It's our people. We have great people. And these gentlemen, I can say it because I know the time and work and effort it takes to be a board member, they give a lot. It's not an easy job. And as I begin to think about them, I could think and I could tell you a hundred things about each one of them that I'm thankful for, because they are good men, each and every one of them. I thought about Mr. Ballmer. He's only been serving not quite a year yet, but he brought to this board new enthusiasm. Look what's going on in Gretna. He's a part of all of that. He lives in that community, he's best in that community, he puts his own money in that community with his business. Again, I'm thankful for you. I truly am. Dr. Miller, you're always very thoughtful about making a decision. You think about it, you don't make hasty moves. You've been instrumental to this board in bringing your past knowledge from both your career in the school system, but from being on that board. I'm thankful for that. And I'd look at Mr. Ballmer. Mr. Ballmer, I've watched him for many years before serving, but I've served him the last three years, and he has served a long time, 14 years, I think, man? 15 years now. That's pretty valuable to us, because a lot of times, things come up, and he can remind us of we did this, or this happened, or just in his mind, he can remember something that occurred. But the most of all, the thing that sticks out with me about Mr. Ballmer is his Christian vows. And we've had some lengthy conversations about that, and Mr. Ballmer appreciates that Mr. Blackstock. Mr. Blackstock is very passionate about his county. He's extremely passionate about the northern end. You'll hear him say real often, "Don't forget us up there, we need to be taken care of." But he does a lot of things. He's instrumental in the formation of the Stanton River River. He's been instrumental in guiding us through and helping with some financial issues, as we did our budgets. He's been our finance chairman, and that's not an easy job, for several years in a row. Mr. Blackstock, I appreciate that guidance very much. Mr. Scares? Man, but I can't say enough. The job you've done, I've truly enjoyed serving you for three years. You've showed great integrity. You've stood up in the firing line on some issues, taken a lot of heat, because you were passionate about providing the best quality for the citizens, and that is so admirable, and I appreciate you very much. And lastly, but not certainly least, with Mr. Davis, outstanding friend, I appreciate your friendship, appreciate your friendship with all of you, we're not just colleagues, but they have become friends. But Mr. Davis, over the last three years, has expressed and shown humility throughout his three years of service. And a couple of times, I would admit publicly, he'd pull me to the side and reminded me not to forget where I came from. We need to know that sometimes. We need to be reminded, and we need to be reminded of why we chose to run and why we're serving. Because I can tell you, certainly not in the conversation, is because we want to do the best job we can for the county, and we want to see this county continue to go forward. But it is very meaningful when you hear others outside of Pennsylvania County wanting to know what's happening in Pennsylvania County, how are you doing what you're doing? And this doesn't just happen, I mean, this is happening statewide. We're getting more state recognition than we ever have. We're on the radar now. So, please, please, keep us in your thoughts. And if we can do anything, just like Mr. and Miss, Mr. and Mr. Richardson tonight, we want to help you with your problems. So, if you got them, please come to us. Come to our staff, they're willing to do everything they can. So, again, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and in particular, once again, I want to say thank you to this entire board. I appreciate you for this. County Administrator, please.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. I would say also, I was part of a group of three people myself, Danville Economic Development Director, Telly Tucker, and, gosh, I was forgetting her last name, Jennifer Runz, we were invited to speak to the North Carolina Rules Center, which is a group that shepherds 85 out of 100 counties in North Carolina that are of rural nature. And they, we were invited because they wanted to know, how come Danville, Pennsylvania County works so well together? How come our economic development program is doing what it's doing? And all the things that Ms. Warren just said. So, it's not only in Virginia, but rural counties in North Carolina also recognize what we're doing and asked to see our secret songs, which we didn't show. I do want to also comment and thank Mr. Blackstock for mentioning that we are trying to adapt as we learn issues in our solid waste program. We are, as humble as we can be, trying to figure out what's going to work for everyone involved, and we're willing to adapt as we get that public input, including the hours of our sites. We talked about that briefly this afternoon. We are running this pilot program through the end of the calendar year, and then we're going to step back and see what works. And what doesn't work? And what works at Mount Cross and Mount Hermon may not work at Broad School or Blair's. So, there may be some customization of hours and other services to adapt to those communities' particular needs. So, please stay tuned and keep giving us your input on how we can make the system better. I do want to also say that we are very seriously taking our responsibility of running the pet center on January 1st. It is of top importance to our team. Mr. Sides is heading up that effort. We are deeply in the interview stage, we're a pet center manager, and we are very, very pleased to report that we have several very high-quality applicants, and we feel like we are going to hit the ground running on January 1st, not only continuing operations, but making operations better. So, we feel very good about where we are there. Also, we have reached, and they have reached toward us, the SDCA of Pennsylvania County, we're exploring opportunities where we can work together better and differently than we ever have before, and we're closely aligning our organizations, because they both have, at the end of the day, the same goals. And we'll keep you up to date as we explore opportunities with that group. I believe any day now, maybe the first of next week, we will be, somebody's going to correct me if I get this wrong, sending out the employee satisfaction survey.
Thirty-seven.
Oh, yes, thirty-seven. So, we're really looking forward to getting a pulse of what our employees think about working for us, where we can improve and make their jobs more meaningful. But it's a great opportunity for us to step back and see how we can make Pennsylvania County not only a great place to live, and the organization a great place to work, and really excited to get those results back shortly, and we'll certainly be sharing those with the board as we move in. I do want to finally comment about, first of all, I'll say, Dr. Miller is extremely generous with his remarks about this voter issue in the elections office. I don't feel as generous with my remarks about this. I do believe there is a miscarriage of responsibility in this matter, and it could have been handled much, much better. On our level, we just learned about this a few weeks ago. In fact, you may recall, on the week ending November 2nd, we alerted you to our awareness of this through a very brief statement in our weekly update. And we invited at that time, Ms. Bayless, to be before your work session this evening to explain what's going on. My 30,000-foot opinion is that this could have been handled better. It could have been handled months ago with much less confusion and without any appearance of voter suppression. It is greatly disturbing. Everyone in this county should know, and Mr. Hunt is a much better verse than explaining this, that this is not actually with the board supervisors. This has been done via the Board of Elections at the state level, through the county boards of elections, and outside of the purview of this board of supervisors or county administrative staff. But I pledge staff's acute involvement, and would also encourage the board of supervisors to author a very direct letter to the Board of Elections asking, "Why did this happen?" Because I don't believe it could have, should have, and I think it could have been averted, and everyone could have had a better understanding of what's going on. I'm sorry I don't know this matter more in depth, but I promise you that you will be briefed in detail by Baden and I, so that we all understand how this could have been averted, and we can implore our Board of Elections to take corrective action, and I'm sure it doesn't come again. Thank you very much. Happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, sir. County staff was looped into this matter extremely late. I echo all of David's sentiments. Ms. Bayless was invited to brief you on this matter at the work session, but she declined. I think she said she needed more time. My pledge to the citizens of Pennsylvania County and this board is that county staff will get to the bottom of this and do our hardest to rectify any wrongs that have occurred, and we will bring you back the information that you seek as soon as possible. And I too believe that this was mishandled, and it's not the best infrastructure that was currently occurring, and we will bring this back to you as soon as possible. That's my word.
Thank you, sir. Okay? All right. I think it concludes everything, others are going into closed session.
Tonight, we have one closed session. As I am 17A on your agenda, I'm going to read this matter. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officials appointed to employees of a public body. Legal authority of Virginia Code, Section 2.2, 3711A1. Subject matter: County administrative purpose. Discussion of a potential new employment agreement. At this time, I'll be in motion in a second. Just enter the closed session for the specified matter.
I'll make a motion, enter the closed session, discuss the matter as presented by our county attorney.
Motion by Mr. Blackstock, second. Take it. Second by Mr. Scares, any discussion on the motion?
I thought I hit it.
Any discussion on the motion? Please cast your vote.
Yes.
Okay, we'll do yours, Bob.
Quick, Tim, bro.
Okay. Your vote is?
Yes.
Record a vote. Motion carries unanimously.
Be resolved at the meeting of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors on November 20th, 2018. The board hereby certifies by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters are lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorized in the closed meeting or heard or discussed or considered in the closed meeting. If any member believes that there was a departure from the requirements of the code, he shall so stay prior to the vote indicating the substance of the departure. The statement shall be recorded in the minutes of the board. Is this a roll call?
Yes. Mr. Ballmer?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Ms. Warren?
Yes.
Okay. Other matters to come up before the board in the following closed session?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to put in the motion that we adopt the county of Pennsylvania, Virginia employment agreement with the county administrator, Mr. David Smith.
Motion for Mr. Davis to approve the contract as presented for the county administrator, David Smith.
Second.
Second by Mr. Scares. You getting this up here?
I am.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. All votes are in case, please record a vote. Motion carries four to three. There being no other bids to come before this board, I declare the meeting adjourned.